All right, good morning. Today is May 31st, 2019, it's nine o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting the Logan County Commissioners to Order. Please rise for the flex.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item three, any citizen desiring to be heard? Hearing now, we'll move on to item four, consideration and possible action on approving minutes for May 15th and 28th, 2019.
Make a motion for a second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. Okay, item five, discussion concerning county highway funding and priorities. Presentation followed by discussion to include current county road funding compared to maintenance cost per mile. Gentlemen, I've threw together a little PowerPoint presentation, I actually hate these things, but there's a need to walk through the process here.
We want the light on or off?
Well, as soon as this thing pops on, we'll... Okay, now I'm gonna go to sleep. All right, so I started this little presentation with a little bit of humor from my libertarian friends. They always talk about roads and libertarian mindset, but my roads, which is always the reason that people believe that the state should be involved in maintaining roads. There may be some thought that can be done, but I'm not sure a whole lot. Okay, so we'll start the lawful duty is to maintain, our lawful duty is to maintain roads that best serve the most people. And that's in the Road Statute 69. And we've got that little part highlighted there, it's cut out. So when it comes right down to it, and we've got situations like today, and we run low on funds, that's kind of how we prioritize things, and we, sitting at this table, understand that. The challenge that we have is educating everyone else that we interface with. So when I took this job, and one of the first things that popped into my head was, one, how many roads do we have? What kind of roads are they? And what does it cost across the nation to maintain those roads per mile? And I looked at it from a business standpoint, you know, cost per mile per year. What does it cost per mile per year to maintain it? So did this quick little Google search just on gravel roads. And there's not a whole lot of recent data, but this one study that I looked at was in $20,14. And at that time, it said the cost of an average mile of this gravel road was $8,000 per mile. That's in 2014. And it says the paved roads on a mileage basis cost about $8,500. Now, given inflation and all that, that's up to about $9,000 and about $10,000 respectively, once you do the 3% inflation. Now, paved roads are also a little bit different because there's a reclamation cost to paved roads, as we all were aware of. After about 10, 15 years, you lose the base on those things, and you gotta go in and reestablish the base and that kind of stuff. So it starts costing a little more money. So I looked at what that, what does that really look like, right? So the road type over there on the top right, paved roads, or the top left, excuse me, paved roads annually cost about $38,000 a year over a 25-year lifespan to maintain. Gravel roads cost about $9,000 a year over a 25-year lifespan to maintain. Now, right under that, where it says adequate gravel, that's the conversion of a gravel road to a paved road. We do a little bit of that in Logan County today because of the growth in the southern part of the county. We're constantly trying to figure out how to turn red dirt into black asphalt. For an adequately maintained gravel road, which means one that we've been throwing nine grand a year at to maintain, the drainage already works, the ditches are there, and it's already crowned properly, and all we gotta do is go in and put a nice driving surface on it. That is, that cost approximately $53,000 a year instead of $38,000 a year to convert that road. Because you've got the initial construction cost of around $400,375. There's preservation costs for asphalt. At year 18, you do an overlay, a little thin overlay, two inches or so. And then at year 25, you look at rehabilitation. So to go in and stabilize the road and put a new top on it again, right today, today's dollars, it's about $65,000 to do that. Underneath that, inadequate gravel road, and Mike, we've all, we all have those, Mike, Monty, everybody, we all have a lot of inadequate gravel roads. And when we have folks to come in and help us, right? So the initial construction cost down there, $2 million a mile, I think that's a little bit light. Because as we get some of our state agencies involved in that, and we have to go out for funds with them, taking on the king's, the king's rules for accepting the king's money at that point, over a 25-year lifespan to convert an inadequate gravel road to pavement costs about $118,000 a year over a 25-year lifespan for that road. So that, right there, the difference between $53,000 and $118,000 is the difference between an adequate gravel road and inadequate gravel road. And we have a lot of, a lot of them toward the inadequate side, anyway. So I looked at that, and then the next thing popped in my mind, okay, so this is what it costs to maintain these roads, or if we were gonna maintain them like a lot of the other states in the nation do. This is a list from the Oklahoma Tax Commission. And Troy and I were talking about, how do we figure this out? Because it's kind of interesting. The Oklahoma Tax Commission has a website where you can go look at the highway fund, right? What each county in the state is given as far as highway funds. But they don't make it really easy so to put this kind of all together where it makes sense. I did about a week's worth of research and talking with Troy, and making sure that I didn't do something really stupid as far as the information I was presenting. But this is on the Oklahoma Tax Access Point website, and anybody can go and look this stuff up, okay? So what we're looking at here is Logan County's, what is that, the diesel exotics tax that I got highlighted up there? Anyway. And then over on the side, all of those highlights, those color highlights over on the right side, I put those on there because you can't tell what, from the dropdown over here, revenue and taxes and license on the left side versus county taxes and license on the right side. You can't tell one from the other unless you absolutely know. You know, I'm looking at a template that our treasurer printed out, that's the only way I could track those back. But now I understand where the money comes from and where it goes. An item of interest, as we're, there's only one piece, there is one piece of the tax, gas tax that goes to our general fund, but it's very, very minuscule piece, very small piece, and it's the one highlighted in red. Everything else goes to roads and bridges. This is something you guys are really familiar with, this is what we get from our treasurer when the Oklahoma Tax Commission sends that stuff in. This was from last month, and you guys are real familiar with that, that number right there? That hit us pretty hard. That's one of the lower ones, that is the second lowest one that we've had since I've been a county commissioner here. We did have one a little bit lower than that last year, but it really causes us issues because there comes a point where we have to pay for equipment, people, always, right? So we've got ongoing costs that we have to maintain, and this is the money that we get to do that with. And so when we only have enough money, you know, if we only get enough money to pay for equipment, people, and can't buy fuel and rock and the other stuff, then we're pretty much stymied as far as what we can do. This is the allocation that we send out, you guys have seen this before, but this is, this basically points out, the stuff in blue is our personnel cost, maintenance and operations is what's left over, equipment lease is a fixed, is a fixed cost that we have, that we can determine. Lease purchase and personnel are pretty much costs that we have. And then whatever is left over goes into maintenance and operations. And as we all know, we didn't get very much in maintenance operations for June. District one of there, I think that number is like $6,600. We kind of need to remember that number here and maybe not remind you of why. So I got to looking at District one, just in my district over here, and we need, I think we need to do this for the whole, for the whole county. But in my district, I have 44 bridges, four of which are closed, and that, actually that needs to be updated, I've got about seven closed now because of the flood. Road miles is around 270, and that includes the neighborhoods that have been taken into our responsibility by past commissions. Paid miles approximately 83, and I've got five that we plan to pave over the next four years, and those are the ones with the red dots, red line dots on them. Neighborhood miles, we've got probably, we've got in excess of 18 miles of neighborhood paved roads that we're responsible for, that over the years the board has accepted responsibility for. Dirt road miles, we've got about 187. So that was the scope. So looking at what it costs and what we have, and this is what I'm looking at, what we have, what's the scope, right? So that's what, so we'll go back here again. This cost of maintaining, what does that mean to us? Well, in my little district here, we get, up there at the county highway fund, we get approximately one and a half million dollars a year. That's kind of what it's been generating. County highway sales tax, the sales tax, the quarter cent sales tax that the three of us split generates for each one of us around $350,000 or almost a million, a million, it's right at a million dollars a year, plus and minus a hundred thousand dollars or two. And then the C B R I, that's bridge, that C B R I fund, those are monies that come directly to the county, that's not C I R B money, that's a completely different thing. You won't see C I R B on this spreadsheet anywhere, because I don't count on it. It's not controlled by us, and anyway, there's a whole nother discussion about that. So our income in my district for state highway, for the highway fund is just under $2 million. Our expenses, if we were to maintain bridges, and I'm estimating $5,000 a year per bridge for maintenance, and I don't think that's over, I think it might be a little light, just to be honest. Paved roads, we figured 101 with our neighborhoods, paved roads are $38,000 a year if fully maintained, so that's 3.8 million. Gravel roads, 187 at 9,000 again. Our annual maintenance cost expense is somewhere around $5,700,000, $5,700,000, with a budget shortfall close to $4 million. Now, I'll be honest with you guys, I get off, I'm better off than either of the other two districts of you guys. I mean, as far as this budget shortfall number goes, right? We all get the same amount of money, right? The 1.9 million dollars. But it's like Monty has a whole bunch more gravel roads up there. He doesn't have a whole lot less paved roads, he's got a few less. And so, you Mike, you got a lot of paved roads down South County and a lot of gravel roads. The expenses for the other two, when we put them together, you'll be able to see, I've got one just for the county, income and expense for just for the county and budget shortfall for the county. But then we drop down here and look at C I R B, right? And I've got some question marks there. On a average, I say average, there's nothing average about, sorry. We should get about $1.5 million a year in served funds, if it's split within our district. So that's approximately a half a million dollars in served, and we don't get the control of how that money's spent or where it goes or anything like that. And that's why I don't include it in income, because it's not ours, we don't, we don't get to use it. And my point also is, at a half a million dollars, given the shortfall, it's not even a drop in the bucket toward making things better. Okay. Primary source, county road funds. And these are the statutory sources, right? And this is, this is how roads and bridges are funded in Oklahoma, through the legislation. And of the gasoline tax, of the 16 cents, just a little over a nickel actually goes to counties for roads and bridges. On the diesel tax, which is 13 cents a gallon, about a little over 4 cents per gallon goes to counties for roads and bridges. So all of this stuff, they say, well, we've got all this gas tax and fuel tax, and we've got all these taxes to help roads and bridges, it's kind of like the education issue, right? So there's a lot of different ways that education is funded, but nobody knows how. This is a problem. Nobody, nobody really understands this, except the people that doesn't want anybody else to understand it. So I'm gonna run off that. Okay, Oklahoma Tax Commission. This is, this is how all these calculations are done, and it's just a mess. There's nothing, there's nothing reasonable about the way this is done, in my opinion. Okay, so basically, counties get around 30% of the funds from the state to maintain over 70% of the transportation infrastructure in our state. So when you look at county highway fund appropriation, so gross production, severance tax, counties get just a little over 10% of that. Vehicle taxes and licenses, we get about 27, 26%. Motor fuel taxes, that's right at around 30%, 30%. And that's, again, that's our primary source for funding roads and bridges. It just makes no sense to me. Now, in comparison, what I did here was look, I just used the county road miles, because we hear a lot of things about ODOT puts in, puts in, gives to the Oklahoma Tax Commission each year the official road miles for the county. So Oklahoma Tax Commission can do its tax calculations for us, right? Well, so if you figure out how much county highway funds we get each year, divide that by the miles we have, that gives you the funding per mile. So you can see, Payne County gets about 34, 70, we get about 3,000. Gartville County gets 26, Lincoln County gets about 24, and Noble County gets about 2,000. Now, all of these counties that I'm, that I'm putting up here touch, we're in the center of that, okay? Now, when you look at Oklahoma County, right, they get about $21,000 per mile per year for 500 miles. However, the majority of their miles in the incorporated areas are paved roads. And if you, and if you go back and look at, and remember what paved roads cost to maintain, that's 38,000. So even Oklahoma County doesn't get enough money per year to fully maintain their road system. I do not want anybody to think that I am advocating that Oklahoma County and Canadian County and Kingfisher County get less money and we get more because that's a social district. I would not ever advocate that. My point of putting this slide up here is that we're, this, these tax methods and functions that they use to distribute the highway funds don't have anything to do with the number and types of miles of roads that we maintain. So it's just a magic way that they say, yeah, we're helping fund the state, the county roads and highway system. They, there's nothing, it has nothing to do with road miles. I mean, absolutely nothing to do with road miles. I think this is, this makes that obvious. And so when you, when you look at how that settles out, we're right, right in the middle there, just a little over 3,000. I will comment that Kingfisher County and Canadian County, the reason that their numbers are higher is because of the gross production, oil gross production tax that comes out of their county. Each, each county gets to keep a portion of the production in their county. And so that is intended to help offset, they say it's intended to help offset the destruction caused by oil field activity in the county. However, I will tell you that Kingfisher County produces a lot of oil, absolutely they do. And those trucks run through Logan County over to Payne County to cushion. They're on a hot trip back and forth all the time. So they're absolutely destroying our roads in Logan County and Payne County from, from the gross production activities. We don't get any offset for that at all. Now, again, I'm not saying that that needs to be spread out, I'm just saying that this, this type of road funding is very, it had to be done by a bunch of politicians, it's very political, that's all I'm gonna say to that. All right, so remember back when I said this last month in June, we got $6,600 left over in our highway fund, our maintenance account? May 15th, right around there, is when this nastiness started, it started actually the week before that. So we had a big washout, we lost a road up in the, outside of Kingfisher County line area. And this tin whistle came out, we couldn't find it, it was gone, it was absolutely gone. But that piece of pipe sitting on that trailer, that piece of pipe costs $3,600 to replace that. That's over half of the June highway budget that I've, that I've received in my highway fund. And you guys deal with the same thing every day too, I know that, I'm just, we're just making points. So here's, here's the whole county, right? So here's, here's our footprint, county highway fund, our income, we get about 46, 4,600,000 a year. Our sales tax, like I said, it varies between 1.3 and, and $1 million a year. C B R I that we manage here locally, we get about $230,000 a year for that, is what the average was. So we get about just a little, a little under $6 million a year. Our expense, if we look at the bridges that we have, around 220, I put 5,000 up there, a million, 100,000 for, to maintain those paved roads, I think I'm a little light with 250 in the county. And then gravel roads, about 9,000. So our total bill, our expense, if we maintain things like we're supposed to, is around $20 million a year, of which we get just under $6 million. Again, if we threw another one and a half million of served money in there, which the ODOT will not let us manage right now, it's not the end-all, be-all, cure-all for us. Served money won't fix this issue.
Paying under them expenses, that's no employees or insurance or...
No, no, no.
I just wanted to point that out.
No, so expensive, that's all together, right? So all of the expenses, we have employees and equipment, right? Come, come out of that income that we've got up there, right? But that does count employees and equipment. So the $30,000 per mile per year, that would, that would be, if you contracted that out, that's the average cost, is about 38,000 a year. So that, that would include at that point, people and, people, equipment, processes, right? So back in the olden days, back in the olden days, what do we call these roads? So what are the classification of the roads, right? So back in the olden days, if you look down in that bottom left-hand corner, we had paved roads, we had gravel roads, we had graded and drained roads, we had unimproved roads, we had primitive roads, and projected road, and a revolutionary road. They all had county ID numbers on it. So that's kind of the bottom, that's southwest portion of Logan County on an older ODOT map that was printed back around 97-ish, right? But the level of detail that was on this map is what I found fascinating, is that each one of the housing areas and the drainage, the, all of the bridges are on there, and the type of road that was there in 97 is on there. So all of those, all of those gravel roads were, are also graded and drained, right? So they move up the list, from primitive to unimproved, graded and drained, and graded and drained to gravel, and gravel to paved, right? So they assume that a paved road is also graded and drained, I just wanted to make that point. So all of those classifications were there in 96. Well, what do those mean to us as far as how we get money to maintain those roads? Well, it doesn't mean anything, because nobody takes that into consideration, except us. And then here's another, another way, another place that we have our roads classified, and this is the rural function classification, right? So there's this thing called a major collector, a rural functional classification, major collector, collector for a rural road. Now, if you look at the, down in the bottom, again, District one, the light blue portion, you'll see the green stripe that runs across the top of that, that's Highway 33, right? And as it comes into Guthrie there, going south, that's Broadway. Broadway, until it gets to that dot down there in the middle, is a rural major collector. And I kind of agree with that. But all of the, all of that rural stuff stops in that little gray box down there, because that is called an urban area boundary, and that is the Oklahoma City urban area boundary. So rural collectors don't matter down through there. Now, rural collector road classification means something when we're applying for federal funds for, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit later in our meeting. But these rural classifications, we really need to go back and look at that again. I'll give you another example of why. Coming out of Cacheon, Oklahoma, 74F that goes east over to Highway 74. From there, there's a rural collector road that goes from 74 East over to Broadway, it's called Seared Road. It's one of the nastiest pieces of road real estate in my area. It's absolutely the worst road that I've got. It floods every time something downstream happens. You can't keep, there's no, there's no ditches there, I mean, December, the Cottonwood Creek comes up and completely closes off that road for three, four miles, every time the cottonwood comes up, and it floods and washes out. That should never be classified as a major collector for, for our county. I don't know when it was done or why it was done, but all of those things, they don't, they don't make any sense from, from a management and maintenance standpoint. For us to try and maintain that road as a major collector makes no sense to me. But anyway, here's, these are the other, other areas. All right, so go back to responsibilities for county roads, for counties, right? So the Board of Commissioners has exclusive jurisdiction over the designation, construction, and maintenance and repair of all county highways and bridges. It doesn't say with ODOT's permission, I just wanted to point that out. Okay, and then the bottom line again is that our lawful duty is to maintain roads that best serve the most people. We, we don't get, we don't get funded at the level that we just looked at there, where we can maintain everything at 100%. where we can maintain everything at a hundred percent. So then it's our responsibility to do the, the best, or the most for the best people, for the most people. The best for the most people, I think is what I was trying to say. Now, I put this one up here for Damon. He's not here today. I seen he passed his long thing. Cause he got this real shocked look on his face, rightfully so, when, when I mentioned at a, a previous meeting that, you know, if we can't maintain it and the people that own the land adjoining it want the, to, to work on the road, want to do that, we can, we can put it back in their, in their custody. And, and what I mean by their custody, a county mile line, the, the, the section lined with, uh, or the right-of-way never really goes away on a county mile line. It, it can, we can close road and we can, we can revert that back to the landowners and they can, they can use that as a road themselves. But it never really goes away because the, the county, Board of County Commissioners can always come back, whether it's a year or ten years or twenty years later, and reopen that road again if we, if we so decide, if they so decided at that point. But, but the point, my point is here is if, if we take and turn that back to the, the folks that currently own the land, then we're no longer obligated to maintain it. The, the, the legal obligation there, you know, if somebody gets hurt, that's, you know, the, first of all, you know, all of us, I know all of us stay up. The thing that keeps us up at night is worrying about people running into a hole on one of our rural roads that we haven't found yet during one of these floodings, uh, that we can't keep up with or we haven't kept up with. Not, not because we can't do our jobs, but because of just so much damage out there right now. We're still uncovering it. Anyway. This, uh, this part of the Organic Act basically talks about the sixty-six foot right-of-way and, and related public highways and, and we can give it back to the owners, um, for their use, um, until it's needed for the county again. Okay, so back to, so who determines what gets done in the county? Well, the, read the statutes and the statutes clearly indicate it's the Board of County Commissioners are, are solely responsible for everything that happens or fails to happen here. However, we, we do have a state agency that, that wants to control a, a part of our funds and also direct that we use a C E D to receive those funds. And we're in talks, uh, with ODOT right now concerning that. So ODOT has explained that the reason, the reason counties have to go to CEDs is because ODOT entered into a cooperative agreement with each of the CEDs for them to do that. And they say because we have a represent, we have representation on the C E D five board money that because the C E D five board agreed with this, that we as a Board of Commissioners are bound to do what ODOT tells CEDs to do. I believe that's just a little bit contrived. Cause counties, uh, don't respond to state agencies. We respond to legislation. So if you look, look at, this is attachment D to the cooperative, and I'm going to use that term loosely, cooperative agreement that ODOT entered into with CEDs, because there's nothing cooperative about this when you look at this attachment D, the scope of work. This has to do with the served. And this is a generic scope of work. They attach ones for creating signs, for doing bridge inspections. There's, there's one for everything that CEDs do today in Oklahoma. C E D five doesn't do any of that, right? So the other thing I noticed was that, that attachment, uh, is a two-year deal. It was implemented in two thousand and six, expired in two thousand and eighteen. So there is no real, uh, scope of work that we're under today between ODOT and C E D. So this looks very directive to me, right? So the department requires, the department being ODOT, requires the support of the Circuit Engineering District. That, that's an interesting statement. The C E D will function as an extension of the department. That's also an interesting statement. The C E D will minimize the department's need to apply its own resources. Oh my. Okay. Then down at the bottom, you know, then it says the CED is providing these services on a non-exclusive basis, which means the department at its option may elect to have any of the services set forth in this basic service scope of work performed by department staff. This is what they're saying binds Logan County to do what ODOT says, to go to the C E D to get our served program included. A state agency can't direct a county to do anything that's not in, in law. Okay, so we'll go back to Title sixty-nine, six oh one dot three. Talks about the adoption of an annual priority plan and budget. And this is for the construction of county roads and bridges. Honor before September thirtieth each year, the Board of County Commissioners shall adopt. Didn't say may, might, if you want to. Shall adopt an annual priority plan and budget for the construction of road, bridges, culverts, and drainage projects during the next fiscal year and four years succeeding the next fiscal year, based on available and existing estimated future funds administered by the Department of Transportation for county bridges and roads. Doesn't say administered by the C E D. It says administered by the Department of Transportation for the county. Again, that's law. If we were allowed to use those funds ourselves, this is the kind of thing the county can do. If we use this type of a road template, are we going to, will we have pushouts? Yeah, we're going to have some pushouts and pluses. If, if we have, if we do this ourselves, are, are we going to have some areas that are going to wash? Sure, sure we will. But we'll go back and we'll fix this. To be able, we can put in a, a mile of road using that template for about three hundred thousand dollars a mile. If we have to use ODOT's rules and their templates, then it goes to about two million dollars a mile. Did I, did I mention I really liked our Assistant District Attorney, Mike? He's really good. Just came to the mic. County governments possess a portion of the state's sovereignty in order to aid in the administration of governmental affairs. And so is subject only to unqualified legislative control, except as restrained by the Constitution. That's an Attorney General's Amendment. It basically says that counties are, are autonomous from state agencies. We don't take direction from the state agency just because the state agency says, just because I said do it. Just because I said do it. It's not law. It's not, it's not unqualified legislative control. Unqualified legislative control is when the people at Tony Dirt Street get together and create a law saying counties need to do this. Not creating a law that says, we're going to let a state agency tell the counties what they need to do regardless of what law says. We're not going to do that. Done?
That's it.
That's it?
Have you done a lot of work on it?
Very, yeah. Well, I, I want to give our county folks a lot of credit there because she got, she helped a lot of it. She helped a lot of it, especially with those numbers. Okay, so, discussion. Any more?
I don't know. You remember when we tried to form C E D eight?
We already got C E D eight.
Or nine or whatever. The next one would be, you remember that? We were just going to have Logan County in our C E D.
Well, we can't have just one. We're going to have two.
Turned out we were going to get a lot less funding than we do with Oklahoma County being included in the C E D. Uh, also, I don't know if you have heard or not, Carol is, uh, retiring in July. Sure, she might have to go to work for a little.
Yeah.
And, uh, I will say too, that the C E D five was set up by our commissioners so it would maximize the amount of money that could be redistributed to the individual counties, which is coming up at this next meeting is my understanding. And, um, you know, therefore, we hired Carol who was leased and we spent the least amount of money coming out of there, but, uh, that is as a C E D. But, yeah, we did try to get a engineer for the C E D who actually was a P E and could get all, get all set up and everything. But when the, um, C E D five met and looked at all the numbers, they decided it was not an expense, well, let's put it this way, it was too much of an expense that we could all do it individually, uh, by hiring contracted engineers for basically cheaper than it would be for the C E D to operate with a fully, um, funded engineering position. In other words, all the equipment, everything else that's needed, it just seemed to be too costly. And therefore we dropped that idea. But I just wanted to interject that on the C E D, that things are as they were put together. Uh, and, um, and that's what we're living under now. And that's all I wanted to say about it.
So what has, what has C E D five done for us in the last eight years?
Uh, basically distributed funds.
They don't do anything and we pay, we pay a C E manager.
They, they, they collect it, they collect it, there's overhead and they distribute what's left.
I am not disputing what you guys have brought up. I do agree with what you guys have said. And I do believe that money ought to be distributed directly to the counties and not even have possibly a C E D just negotiations maybe with holdup, but regardless.
See, I, I, I think that the concept of C E, C E D is, is a good thing. I mean, honestly, I, I think, I think there's a need for some of that.
Right.
But that need is in areas where you have counties that are way, way out, like out in the Panhandle for example. My brothers and sisters live out there.
Sure.
Um, they don't have the proximity to a whole bunch of P E types that we do here. I mean, I can drive, I can drive ten minutes and, and throw a rock and hit a hundred, uh, physical engineers.
So it's a different physical setup.
Not you.
Okay.
But, but up, up in, no, no, I'm talking about the availability. So, so up in, up in, you know, Woodward, uh, to try and find an engineer up there, you, you might get one. But one, one that's going to be there and, and work for you to do all that. But to have a C E D to, to the ability to put two or three counties together to, to help, put an engineer on site to help them with the legal requirements that we have as a county as far as our engineering for projects over, what is it, two hundred thousand dollars? Anyway, there's, there's bridge project limits and there's road project limits. You gotta have a P E. I can see where a C E D could help in, in that regard to help two or three counties get together and pay for the part-time work for a, a P E, because they're kind of expensive people, rightfully so. But here in, in, in the central part of Oklahoma, C E D five, it, it's, that cooperative agreement that ODOT talks about, that all the CEDs, that sent all the CEDs and they sign up, it's a two-year agreement. And first of all, I think counties can only be held to an agreement annually. But it's a two-year agreement and it has a lot of templates in there. And I mean, all of them. It has all of the C E D templates, everything that the CEDs do throughout Oklahoma. And I'm talking about Oil Seven, I'm talking about sign shops, uh, bridge inspections, project management, right? That's six percent that ODOT hits us with, our served money, they take away. Uh, CEDs can do project management, all that stuff. But, but in C E D five's cooperative agreement that was signed off two years ago, all of those tabs were in that. And all of, and, and nothing was struck out, wiped out, marked out or nothing. But it was just signed accepting it, right? So the served management portion, we don't do.
Correct.
But ODOT's trying to tell us, no, you have to, you have to do that at CEDs. And I think that's, it's interesting that our, our C E D employee, now that ODOT's saying that we got to do this, is retiring, but that may be a different deal. CEDs have a place.
Article sixty-two.
CEDs have a place, but, but their place is, the cooperative agreements that counties enter into with CED are for the mutual benefit of each other, right? So it's for our counties to mutually benefit from the association. There is nothing mutually beneficial about an association with ODOT. That's my thought on CEDs. Get them out of the deal, life gets better. Can't argue that point. Alright, any more on item five? Here now. Item six, discussion of possible action concerning determination of restricted access routes on the county highway system, including possibility of conducting pavement, pavement management study. These are the folks are, that did the pavement management study for, uh, Payne County over there. This is, this didn't, this is not the coring and, and all of that stuff, right? This is a pavement management study. They got a vehicle that has a lot of different stuff on it. But it can, actually, it drives around and it can tell the, the type of pavement, you know, and classification, basically tell you, you know, how long it's going to last. And it'll also, it'll also give, gives us the basis for restricting through truck traffic like Trip and Rick talked to us about at our last, our last meeting we had. That, that type of evaluation is just a little over a hundred dollars a mile. It's, it's not, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars that, that we talked about before. For, for us to do, I, I think they quoted around thirty thousand dollars for just a little over a hundred miles of road that I have to do that with. But I, I think that that qualifies, I believe that qualifies as our due diligence for putting those signs up that we want to do also. We can go back and, and it also gives us a, a basis of priority, uh, for, for our paved roads. You know, which one needs overlay first, which one would benefit most from a chip seal or a fog seal or, or that kind of stuff. It, it would just, it'd just help us get a plan put together. And, and this is, this is one of the things I'll, I'll come back to the board and ask you to, um, approve this for us later. But I, I do want to pursue that, uh, at least over on our, our side in District One. Uh, Mike, you, you, you've got a lot of paved roads over on your side, on the south side and also north-south. You got a lot of paved as well. Uh, it might be something that you want to look at or, or not. It's up to you, but. We, we have to have some basis, uh, to be able to put those signs up.
So you got a hundred miles, you're wanting to put restrictions on them?
No.
So you just want to test all hundred?
I, so here's, so they, they won't come out and do a mile. Just won't, you know, they don't want out of contract to come out and do one mile. They got, there's a, a minimum as well for them. Uh, they, they like to have at least a hundred miles and I've got at least that in, in my district. And if that's what it takes to get them out here, for me to restrict traffic on, on, I think, and I've got about twenty miles that I want to do that on, on paved road.
Sounds good.
But anyway, that's, that's not.
So you're going to bring us back to the board?
Yes, sir. It's not for act- Yes, sir, it's not for action today, it is, it's just one of the things that I wanted to put out there. We're, we're gonna, I think we're gonna go ahead and do this pavement management study with, with the agreement of the board to do that.
Right.
So the, the funding of this is coming out of what?
It would come out of my money.
Okay, that's, that's what I was curious about.
That's, I knew that's what you were asking.
Just like New Orleans, man.
That and the new website, and we're gonna take that out of your.
The website's working good for me, I'm glad I came up with that.
I as well. I'm pleased with it.
So we're done with that, I'll bring that back to the board. Item seven, consideration of possible action to approve lease purchase agreement with Cap Financial for graders for District Two.
Yes, we upgraded our graders, so I would like to make motion to, to accept this.
Okay. Mike, how, how, how long is the?
You agree on that?
I believe it's three years.
Three years?
Or, what is that, five thousand?
Three thousand hours.
Well, as we know, we can't contract, but for fiscal year, so it's, and there's five options. This is all, it's been, this, this was actually hoped to be done about a month and a half ago. However, Lowell had some difficulties with the contracts that were presented by Cap Financial and it's taken this long for Lowell to get them on board. And so I did question because of the timing that we're doing these, basically with the fiscal year thirty days away. This will, will be our official contract for, till June thirtieth and then we'll take our first option July first, so.
So I guess these are all state contracts?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, what kind of warranty you get with that?
What kind of warranty? Uh, like I said, I believe it's three years and three thousand or three thousand hours.
Time, fuel, and travel and everything?
Three thousand hours.
But, you know, a lot of times on the warranties, I mean, I would look at it, that they'll charge you mileage for coming up.
Oh, oh, no.
For service.
No.
Oh.
Need to.
Okay, the way these are, there's a whole bunch of different signings, so I've tried to color code. Mike, you're all these little red tabs.
Okay.
And the board will be the yellow and blue tabs.
God, that's pretty difficult. One, one or two more questions.
Sure.
The price here, $269,850, is that the lease? Over the, is that the cost of the lease?
That's, that's the purchase price, I believe. Am I not correct? I believe it is, it's just the purchase price.
It's $269,850 a mile.
That's the net balance due.
Next balance due.
Per grader.
Right. Right. I believe we put, we put down $150,000.
When the monthly payment of $2,316.91 has an optional buyout of $167,685 after five years.
So at the five-year deal.
What was the monthly deal, Sean?
Pardon me?
What was the monthly deal?
Hours or two, two hundred?
$2,316.91 is the monthly lease.
Over five years or how many hours?
Five thousand.
Five thousand hours.
Five thousand.
Five thousand hours. Run that about two and a half years on one. Anyway. Okay, so I have a motion, uh, have a second.
Is that what you want?
Yes.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Item A, consideration of possible action to approve commercial service agreement with Cox for internet service for District One. We, we're not able to keep up on our internet games, so we need a higher speed. We've got this wireless connection right now and when the rain clouds come, we lose all the connection to our volume. I need a hardwired connection.
Check the yellow one.
The yellow one.
That's what it's in there.
In the blue, you're gonna sign every one of the tabs.
Every one of the tabs.
Surely you can remember that one.
Thank you.
Just trying to go. Hardwired is the way to go.
Sorry?
Hardwired is the way to go. Sounds good to be wireless.
Yeah.
It really does.
Right.
What ones do I sign? And what I do, I put hardwired. What ones do I sign?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a little bit extra work, but.
The blue and the yellow.
Where can I plug into them?
The yellows is maybe the blue there.
The blue and the yellow.
The locations, I love hardwired.
Go ahead and sign that one and send it down while I'm back up to this one.
Fiber switches are neat when it comes to that kind of stuff.
No.
All right.
All done.
Yeah, it's fine.
You guys should really do that stuff.
You do do this stuff.
I don't know why you didn't give me an opportunity to. I mean, I've been, that's what I've been asking for. So I, I wasn't paying attention, Troy, like normal. What about some?
Blue and yellow.
Blue and yellow, thank you.
It's like sausage.
Ooh.
Well, that's good.
That's blue and gold.
It's close. No, yellow, yellow, gold, gold.
Yeah. Walk into the store and ask for blue and yellow and see what you get.
They send you to the diaper department.
Damn, this is a lot of signatures.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion, I, I will move for item eight, since I already signed this.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye. I think.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes without objection. Thanks a million.
Sound like you're a little testy.
He's, he's getting a little testy, if you're watching. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve detention transportation claim in the amount of $540.02 for April.
I'm with motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So what about the blue?
The blue and the yellow, the whole.
Blue and the yellow.
Yeah.
Blue and yellow.
Short cut memory.
Huh?
I'm trying to make it easy.
There you go.
Did you say something?
Blue, blue and, blue and gold, I mean, blue and yellow.
How about green?
No.
Well, I probably missed something.
Stay off that. You wanna take that back with you in the morning?
I'll talk to you about it.
Okay. That's why there wasn't an action here today.
Talk to you about it.
True, makes sense. Okay.
Mike, you missed several on here.
Well, no, don't tell me.
Really?
Yeah, I won't tell you up past.
It's first before it hurts, see?
Yeah, I know.
That'll push you.
Yeah, that one just really escaped.
That's where they whip out their secret PD ring, decover ring that the PEs have?
Yeah.
So they can get through that without going to sleep.
You keeping a big G?
Huh?
You keeping a big G? I didn't even notice it till yesterday.
You really?
I was in the house and it's still on the wall. Why you want it?
See if I got all those from money.
All right.
I don't think so. It's on the wall. Hey, I have a top priority right now.
How many did I miss?
Well, I'm not down to camp. And, no, I'm, Chris, I, I went over and totally missed it when I looked at the house.
Wow. Oh, it's huge. Think I got all those.
No, I had Longhand out there yesterday, fix it. He's got fixed my dollars. Those summer wear.
Two on those.
Blue and yellow.
She's fixing it?
I've got Longhand money. And then I had Chuck Kyle out looking at cement. Oh, because I almost sunk in the grass and decided, no, I didn't need it with the system in the house already. Are you going to lunch at John's today?
I pulled the dang tag.
All right.
I think that's Lowell, but I'll fix it if it is. Don't worry about it.
You got it on me.
I heard from Mike Dean it was seven, five requisites.
Could we possibly do the signature after the meeting? Okay. So this, we, we've approved the action, we'll do the signing after the meeting if it's all right with the rest of the, we can get through this.
Most rural.
All right. Item ten, consideration of possible action to acknowledge receipt of notice of tort claim from Betty Craig and forward to Echo County Claim.
I'll make the motion during.
Oh.
And knowledge. I'll leave in a second.
Oh, I'll second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item eleven, consideration and possible action on appointing requisitioning officers for various counts, we don't have any.
None for eleven or twelve.
Thank you. Item thirteen, consideration of possible action on approving the following temporary road crossing permits for Logan County Rural Water District One. Across East Waterloo Road, point two four miles, North Coltrane Road, East Waterloo Road, yada, yada. Is that yours or mine, Mike?
That's Mike's.
Right.
Where is it again? Waterloo, Coltrane, yes, that's mine, that's that development on the old public county side, they're running water down to it.
Correct.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes without objection. Consideration of possible action on consent agenda. Hey, Mike, that announcement about Carol?
Mm-hmm.
She's been very adamant to tell people that she has not made that public yet.
Uh, she told me that everybody knows more or less now and that she doesn't mind it coming out in the public.
Oh, okay.
That's why she verbally told me on the phone.
That's not what she verbally told another commissioner yesterday afternoon, but okay.
Colonel, it's your turn.
Three months ago, she didn't tell me, she didn't tell me I didn't make it public.
Right.
I guess we had a CED meeting on the sixth, no, fourth?
We've got one coming up, yeah.
Yeah, next week.
Yes, sir.
Next Tuesday.
Yes, sir, we do. That'll be interesting. Why didn't you like twenty hours go through your area?
I did. Siding. Kinda disappointing though, didn't take my house, but.
Sounds like an old penny ending, sure.
Did Monty need a new refrigerator?
Take my wife, please. Take my house, please. So it's worth more in an insurance check than this damn thing?
No, I don't know.
I'll sign this one, that's this one.
I'll see what I pick, sheriff's firm, sure got a lot in store.
Just enough, right, Troy?
Yeah. Hey, what I hear, I hear they need more.
I heard that too. Who does, who's dispatching you guys during the mornings? Daytime?
First three or four of them.
Three. I, I'm just amazed at the professionalism. I get to listen to all of it and the dispatcher at the county sheriff's office is, the dispatchers, I'll put it that way, are very, very professional and very, um, open, I guess I'll put it that way. I, I really like the way they do their work.
Transfer.
Does he hear, I'll pass it on. Yeah, like vacations or time off or days off or, there's, there's about three or four to cover.
It, it seems to me that, that they're forward-thinking people, because they, they've already, they already talked through what the officer on the ground's gonna need to provide that connection. I, I just.
They do very, very challenging work.
They do, they do, and I think they do a very good job at it.
How do you hear them?
Uh, well, did them. I, I got this, I got this little brick, that scanner. And Damon was okay with me having a scanner, as long as he didn't have to push the talk on him. But I look, I get to listen to all the, all the first responders in the canyon. It's kinda interesting.
So he's calling a radio?
Yes, it is radio. Is that, yeah, absolutely.
Radio.
It's a radio.
Like a fuzz buster, or fuzz.
Yeah.
Radar.
It's in my truck, go to, consider.
So he knows when he's gonna get a phone call to it?
Actually, I've called the county, I've called the sheriff's office when, I've heard, can you get ahold of the county commissioner in district one and have him, so I will call the sheriff's office, say, hey, I'm here, we're on our way, we're gonna do that.
Mike had people grading into your rooms yesterday.
Out with tractors. Heard that on the scanner.
Nothing on that. They actually own it.
As long as, as long as they get the digits right, I'm alright with it.
Yeah, they said where?
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
It's all of them.
I'm just trying not to give them all new stuff. There you go. Cut those.
I'm still in favor of whoever's standing. How come the candy's on again? Hey. I sent, Bonnie, I sent that. Watch agreement that ODOT CED are part of it. To, to the chairman and secretary. Of our board. To ask if that'd be added to the agenda to discuss. On this upcoming meeting.
They're cooperative agreement between ODOT and the CED, that's legislation, doesn't, wouldn't that have to be modi, to modify that, wouldn't that have to be done through legislation?
So ODOT can direct?
Yeah, supposedly.
It's, it's indictment by proxy is what they've done. Basically, the counties enter into a cooperative agreement with the CED for the mutual benefit. And then, ODOT comes along on the backside, enter into a cooperative agreement with the CED, and says, because we've entered into a cooperative agreement with the CED, now the counties are legally bound to do what ODOT says. Absolutely not. They, they are not. Our binding, our binding is the cooperative agreement between the county and the CED. We ain't signing crap between the counties and ODOT.
Right, but, but legislation came in there somewhere.
Yes, and created CDs.
And created the CDs.
Right. Well, but they didn't create the CDs to be a, a working arm of ODOT. It's not a subdivision of ODOT. No, never was.
Right.
But that's how ODOT treats them, that's how ODOT, and you look at their, at that cooperative agreement, that's exactly what it says.
I'm trying to narrow down the issue as far as the served dollars.
What about it? Served dollars are supposed to be sent to ODOT divisions.
Right, and then that's controlled, that money is allotted to the counties, but it's controlled by ODOT.
Yeah.
It's managed by ODOT.
It's managed by ODOT, it's not managed by CDs.
Right, it's managed by ODOT. The only freedom that the county has is to pick a project. And then ODOT manages the rest of it essentially.
They manage contract execution.
Right, and they want to maintain that control.
I, I got no problem with them maintaining control. I just have a problem with them telling us that we've gotta do a plan and give it to them, that doesn't mean a damn thing. And if it's gonna be that way, they can do the damn plan and tell us what they're gonna do.
The five-year plan, correct?
Yes, yes.
Well, that, that five-year plan, I have grown to believe that it is, it is not set in stone by any means.
It is, it absolutely is, it's set in stone by legislation, it says the counties will do that, not anybody else.
Let me, let me rephrase that then. As in not being set in stone, meaning that, let's say you've got a project that's on that five-year plan that's coming up. And you decide that you've had a, something come up that you decide that it needs to be, you need to pick a different project than that one listed.
Right.
You can change that.
We can, yes, by law, yes.
You can change it.
Yes.
So it's not set in stone?
It's not, no.
The five-year plan is not set in stone?
The five-year plan belongs to the county, it's ours to make, ours to change.
Right.
We tell ODOT what we changed.
Right.
We don't ask permission.
Right.
That's my point.
Yeah, so it's not set in stone. You can, hey, you can modify that five-year plan at any point.
Right, but ODOT thinks it is.
Nah, you can modify it, I've been doing it lately, switching out projects on the five-year plans. Due to the request of the county commissioner.
Wouldn't it be a pretty good plan though if they just give the money straight to the counties and let us make?
Okay.
It'd be a better plan, but then they wouldn't be able to dip into it and get their cut.
This is why I actually was talking about this, because I sat down with Wilson Lyle at lunch one day, and we talked about this. The, the problem seems to be that the counties would like to spend that money the way they see necessary to spend it.
Absolutely.
But the state wants to keep control of it.
Absolutely.
So why couldn't there be at least a compromise that a county commissioner could say? You know, I know you got those served dollars, you wanna control those served dollars, but I've got two hundred and thou, two hundred thousand dollars that you'd come up to spend on this emergency project, will you allot me two hundred thousand dollars? Out of that served money?
Legislation was ran this year that would allow the, the counties to directly receive.
Let me take care of that real quick.
Well, because they want the state to maintain control.
Right now, the state has control of it. ODOT has control of it, they get about six percent of that money by hook or crook or inspection or whatever they wanna call it. They get about six percent of that money, because it's given in one lump, and they control it, and what, and six percent, six percent, we get about a million and a half dollars a year. Six percent of a million and a half dollars, with them controlling how it's spent, how it's done, and how it's contracted. Is a whole lot more than zero percent of one and a half million dollars if they give it directly to the county. That's the worthy runs at.
Okay.
It has to do with money, who gets paid.
Right.
It has to do with who gets paid.
That's the same scenario that the difference between CED five and CED four is, CED four has created a business off of this.
So is seven.
And so has seven, have created a business off of this. You go, you go to CED five, you have one person working for you, you go to CED four, they have a whole building.
Hang on, we got one person employed.
Right, you got a whole company over there, that, that create task orders that build to the state.
Well, here, here's the thing, CEDs was built for retirement home for ODOT people. I mean, let's be honest with you, that's what it is.
Well, that's what you get, is a lot of ODOTs, people that.
Sure it is, engineer getting mad at the county they're working for.
So what was, what was the first question asked when Shannon Shepherd said he was retiring? Which CED is he gonna go to work for? I mean, fortunately, he missed both there.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I understand, I'm trying to just say, see some way that, that there can be a compromise, that the county commissioners can start getting a portion of that served dollars and spend it where they need to spend it.
I don't want it, I mean honestly, I don't want it anymore, I'm tired of fighting for it. I would rather the legislature just take it all and leave us alone. Go away.
Well, they did, you're well manned.
No, I'm talking about the go away, the go away part with ODOT, just go away, leave us alone, get out of my business.
Well, that, that would be the ultimate goal.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
But then you'd be back, they, from what I understand, I'm not educated in this, but you'd be back in the nineteen seventy eights with.
So I've had a motion to have a second, on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Have a motion in a second, further discussion on consent. Hearing that, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes without objection. I have a member that missed here.
I signed it.
Forget I said anything. Transfer appropriations. That term civil defense often, it's kind of a dichotomy, isn't it? It's like uncivil offense or civil defense. It's a beverage tax thing, isn't it?
Make your contribution.
Yes, sir, that's the contribution. What is this?
The claim to the state for reimbursement for the election board secretary salary. You signed it down there at the red tab.
Yeah, I see where I signed it, I was just trying to figure out what I was signing.
Yeah.
Try that one again, Mike.
Alright.
This month?
Yes.
You've been signing the long time.
I have, I've just been missing them.
So what's our latest on our nine one one P set?
We, we had our, we radios installed this week. So we're unpacking boxes, and we'll have ACOG turning their switch on pretty soon, their equipment is upstairs, they just haven't turned it, because they're waiting for us to be able to answer the equipment that's up there.
You guys are still needing to be trained basically on. On systems, is that what, what's going on now?
Well, they will actually turn, they, in short terms, turn the key on so it'll stop ringing where we can answer it, but we had to have somebody there to answer it before we could turn it on.
Right.
So, equipment's there.
You guys moved up to Crowes Nest and got the thing relocated now, and everything's, everything's going great up there, yeah. Y'all been great, that nine one one system, like I said. That's why I got my, so I can start listening to what's going on, and, cause. You guys are doing a really, really, really professional job.
I don't think so.
That's after.
I don't think so.
Almost thirty years of listening to military charity, all kinds of weirdness. Very good.
Well, I'm sort of.
Never talked that nice to Damon's here.
Look, cause Damon's here.
Yeah, we're gonna get the, the, what, it'll be, be able to locate within eight feet of a cell phone supposedly?
I don't think there's a defined measurement of every call, it depends on the technology of the caller's phone.
Yeah, Brett Hawkins was saying within eight feet.
I think with the latest.
That's the new enhanced one.
With the new enhanced one.
But if somebody calls nine one one from a flip phone that's ten years old, won't have the same technology that today's phones have.
Got it.
Are you done yet?
Consideration of possible.
Claims.
Over there yet? Over there yet?
We're waiting on you.
Me?
We're waiting on claims, number fifteen.
I'm done. Oh. Are we on the claims now? We paying claims?
Waiting on the chairman.
Alright, gosh, I'm sorry. Consideration of possible action to approve claims for payment for May twenty nineteen.
I'm against it.
I knew you were gonna say that, that's why I didn't bring it up.
Thanks.
Alright, I'll, I'll move, we approve claims.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any further discussion?
No, I'm ready.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Any P cards, man?
Yes.
Pretty much shopping.
Item sixteen, consideration of possible action on approving purchase card for me.
For this cycle, we have one thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars made one cent.
Did you take it to the location, or did you buy it in?
I, it's Amazon. Right from my desk.
We, we have since given her official, we have officially liberated that card from her office.
Can it move?
It can move, it's no longer grounded, is that, that's the term?
Grounded, yes.
As long as I authorize it, it can go.
It's weird when I buy something that's not from Amazon, if like four or five days, I'm like. Five days, really?
I think I should just endorse my paycheck to Jeff Bezos every week, every month, and be done with it.
You know they have Amazon buttons.
Twin lights requisitioning. They, they just haven't had a chance to get this one.
I see.
It fell off. Push the button and it orders it automatically.
The dash buttons?
Yeah, dash buttons, yeah.
Troy, what if?
They've had those for a long time. That's the pecan.
I make a motion that we.
Do the claims on P card. I'll second that.
We already did the claims, let's do the P cards.
That's wrong, don't make. Purchase on the P card, have them.
Oh, that, that will work, yeah. Have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes without objection. Are we done yet, are we there yet, Damon? Any citizen?
Here none.
See you none. What do you got, Bobby?
Yesterday I sent you a link to a map of Stedway, Oklahoma, with the counties separated out, that you click on the county, and it should bring up your distinguishing paved gravel. Roads.
I didn't get that.
The classification of the road?
It, you, you, it pulls up the, the county. And then you can see what roads are paved, what roads are not paved, what roads are gravel roads, what roads are dirt roads.
Who'd you send it to?
I wanted to test pattern on Mr. Goodman here.
Looks kinda like Spider-Man, it's what it hit me with.
I thought any citizens down in New York, you were addressing the Ford, and you said that you sent it to us.
I've got, I apologize for my incorrect terminology, I sent it to Mr. Marvin Goodman, county commissioner, district one.
Did he get it, Marvin?
And, uh, wanted to let him look at it before I threw it out there too, cause it covers all counties in Stedway, Oklahoma.
I'm not sure where they sent it, US Mail or FedEx?
Via your email address at Gmail.
So it probably went to my buddy in New York, that spells his name the same, except.
Y'all are killing me, I'm trying to do, do a service here.
There's this Marvin Goodman that works in New York for IBM Corporation. He manages technology stuff, like I used to when I worked on. He spells his name M-A-R-V-I-N, that's M-A-R-V-E-N, but we're both Marvin dot Goodman.
I'm checking it right now, I've had enough.
And he, he always sends me the overflow.
Okay.
Once a month.
That's my guy.
He is, he's a great guy.
Sent.
A great guy.
Sent. Logan County. Roads. ODOT.
We've been with.
Quick clean. It's M-A-R-V-E-N.
Okay, great, you got it there, I'll check it when I get here.
She sent it to me too.
Okay, yellow and green.
Can we get the?
Yellow and blue.
How do we get that one that shows, uh, roads that we get OTC money for? But just for Logan County, not for the whole name state?
OTC, yes, sure. We, we get money for all, I mean, just road miles, that's all they do.
Maintain miles.
Road miles.
I follow.
Road miles, the ODOT.
See a good Logan?
To OTC is what we get.
Public.
And it shows all the roads.
Privately maintained, we get all those funded to us?
No, we don't get funded based on road miles, is what I'm saying, it doesn't, road miles is a fictitious thing, made up by somebody trying to say that they're doing their job to help counties maintain their roads.
I see.
Our roads aren't funded based on the type and number of roads we have, that's not how we get funding for our roads, we get funding for our roads based on magic.
And if this link works like you want it to work, or proceeding it to work, I want the kudos to go to Ms. Melissa at local government.
Yes.
But if it don't work, blame me.
Household, well.
Pardon me?
My blind come a little.
Uh, they are, I actually spoke with them yesterday to do a follow-up on their progress, they're having a little bit of issues due to the rain amounts we've had.
Rain?
What rain? And they've been, you know, been getting in on, having to get on access private properties and.
Sure.
Don't wanna destroy everybody's stuff, so it's, it's still gonna be done, but not last. but not as quickly as the two or three weeks that I was predicting.
Rain's to lay in everything. Sure is.
The other thing you asked me to find out about was the flagpole on division.
Yes.
The assessor has that strip of land as school land.
School and commission. They haven't been knowing either, so...
I borrow you important American. Okay. So we finished with citizens desiring to be heard. All right, moving on. Comments, announcements, and questions by the board of county commissioners. Mike?
Um, more rain next week. That's about all I can say. That it?
I don't have anything else.
Hey, I'd like to thank Terra Oil Company for coming and pumping out Noel Cemetery and Brian Hopson and Brandon Hopson for donating their time to help the oil field, our cemetery were flooded and they came out on Memorial Day and was pumping the cemetery out because it was completely flooded.
That's good.
And also, I'd like to thank my employees for working all weekend and everything they do for us after hours. They're doing a great job.
Yep, you guys had a mess, real mess up there, with all the, all the roads and everything.
That's, that's a mess.
Okay, um...
One, one more.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
What about the EMS? The northwest, east, south?
I have enough applicants to set a board, so I, I think at this point I go to Lowell and say, now what do we do?
You know, we don't do anything. I mean, there's nothing for us to do, honestly.
Yeah.
The board is, well, it is, we, we try.
I think we have enough applicants to set a forum, so I don't know if we need, I don't, my question back to Lowell was, did we have to fill all seven seats? I don't know.
Well, can't we do some at work if we don't have enough seats and include what we have?
Do we have four applicants?
Right.
I believe we have four.
We probably ought to run that on the agenda and at least talk about it.
I would really like to get that done.
We'll do something in the meantime, yeah, I'll just, I guess if we can ping Lowell and say, here's what we're looking at, here's what we think we're going to do. Any, uh, recommendations would be helpful. We do, what are you going to do that on the fifteenth, Mike?
Oh, I don't, I don't care, we just, we need to follow up on it, please discuss it or something.
Well, I mean, we're coming up last month in our fiscal year, I mean, when you do the vote. Yes, we do, we put it on for the fifteenth, well, sounds good. We're running that, running that in. All right. Other than, again, thanks to all of the elected officials in the county because they've all been very helpful during the emergency times when we've asked for, when I've asked for information and that kind of stuff, everybody's been real helpful and forthcoming and I appreciate that. All right, item nineteen, consideration of possible action for adjournment.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
We are adjourned.